October 17th. Hi, my name is Al Jenke. I'm the deputy mayor. I'm pinch hitting tonight for Jim Pearman, the mayor, who's out of town. As usual, we have an exciting, action-packed agenda for you. So, let's get on with it. Ally, you want to call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Bruce Bassett.
Here.
Councilmember Jane Brahm.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Thero.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Grady.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Grous. Mayor Jim Pearman. Acting Mayor Al Jenke.
I'm here. So with that, let's start with appearances. This is a time that anybody can address the council on any subject of your choosing. Please address the microphone here and speak clearly and audibly into the microphone. State your name and address for the record. And please limit your comments to three minutes. So do we have anybody who would like to address the council?
Good evening. My name is Emma Stager. I am here from the Sierra Club on the other side, from Seattle. I'm here tonight to ask for the council's support for higher fuel efficiency standards. In July, President Obama issued a new set of fuel efficiency standards. He proposed 54.5 miles per gallon by 2025. And I've been building support in Washington State for these standards and supporting President Obama as he prepares to issue this as an actual proposal in mid-November. And then it will open up this proposal for the public comment period. So I've been garnering support in Washington State from a variety of, you know, local and state elected officials, as well as many organizations. And I'm here to ask for the city council's support. I had the pleasure of being at an event with Councilmember Grady yesterday, supporting electric vehicles at a beautiful park in Mercer Island. And, you know, we need to move towards more clean, more efficient vehicles to reduce our dependence on oil, reduce carbon pollution. And I'd love the council's support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a letter that I've emailed, but I also have hard copies. Great. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the council?
I would. Would you like to?
Please, address the microphone, sir, and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Dr. David John of 8817 Southeast 61st Street on Mercer Island. Title of my talk is "Fluoridation Is Opposed By The EPA Scientist Union." I've given you this now, a copy of, along underneath my talk, you'll see a copy of the five-page report from the EPA Scientist Union, and so that you can follow along and you can see what I'm talking about. As city council, you've probably checked with city water people on how safe it is to continue providing fluoridated water to the people you represent. I assume they reassured you that the U.S. government says it's safe and efficient at reducing cavities. Therefore, you feel comfortable continuing with fluoridated water in spite of listening to people like us coming here repeatedly to tell you of all kinds of evidence that it is neither effective or safe. So in order to break this log, Jim, and help us all move ahead, I've given each of you a copy of a remarkable five-page document from the EPA Scientist Union. It's called the Headquarters Professional Union, explaining why THEY oppose water fluoridation. Their reasons are the same ones we've been telling you about, and they even quote many of the same research papers. Since their government managers would not listen to them, they finally went public by providing a friend-of-the-court brief opposing fluoridation in a lawsuit against the government by a public interest group. The EPA scientists' reasons for opposition include increasingly out-of-control exposures to fluoride, lack of benefit to dental health, hazards to health to people with impaired kidney function, plus chronic toxic hazards of gene mutations, cancer, reproductive effects, neurotoxicity, bone pathology, and dental fluorosis. They also mentioned studies showing decreased IQ in children from higher fluoride areas and fluoride's accumulation in the pineal gland, leading to decreased production of melatonin. The union points out a research paper by John Calcoon that provides details of how data was manipulated to support fluoridation, especially in the U.S. and New Zealand. My main point today, folks, is that the council cannot afford to rely on U.S. government assurances relayed to you by your local professionals that fluoridation is safe and effective when the government's own scientists are telling us that fluoridation is not safe and is not effective. The former president of the EPA Scientist Union, Dr. Robert Carton, summed all this up in his famous quote, "Fluoridation is the greatest case of scientific fraud of this century and not of all time." Members of the council, it is a fraud, so you should read the case against fluoridation from the EPA Union of Scientists.
Sir, your time's up. Would you wrap up your comments, please?
I will. All I was going to say is, please read it, and then I hope you'll decide to stop putting this industrial toxic waste in our water.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Ed Yosikow. I'm from Seattle, and concerned about the fluoridation in water issue. I've been asked by Dr. Bill Osmussen, who couldn't be here tonight, to read a statement that he has written down. And I will have copies for you after that. He says, "My name is Bill Osmussen. I am a dentist with 34 years of experience. Before I was a dentist, I worked as a public health professional. For the first 25 years of my dental practice, I promoted fluoridation. I was taught that it is, it was unnecessary for me to study the science behind fluoridation and that I should trust my professors, who said little about, except that fluoridation was good. It was my patients who convinced me to look at the science, both sides of it, including the law pertaining to informed consent. When I did, the facts hit me like a tree in the gut. Here are a few other reasons why I now oppose drinking water fluoridation. One, the United States Environmental Protection Agency scientists are opposed to fluoridation. In 2001, the United States EPA scientists, speaking to the EPA Union, said, 'We hold that fluoridation is an unreasonable risk, that toxicity of fluoride is so great, and the purported benefits associated with it are so small. If there are any at all that require every man, woman, and child in America to ingest it, borders on criminal behavior on the part of governments.' Second of all, the FDA Center of Drug Evaluation and Research has never approved the ingestion of fluoride for the prevention of dental caries because efficacy has not been adequately demonstrated. Nor has any other agency, federal or state. The Washington State Board of Pharmacy confirms that fluoride added to drinking water is a prescription drug, but no one is writing any prescriptions. Third of all, the CDC claims fluoridation is safe and effective, but the studies it relies on are outdated and poorly constructed. The CDC offers not one randomized controlled trial of fluoridation. Fourth of all, most infants are being harmed by fluoridated water. Studies consistently report that infants and formula mix with Mercer Island water are ingesting hundreds of times more fluoride than nature intended, as when they drink their mother's milk. Fifth of all, every pea-sized amount of fluoridated toothpaste contains about a quarter-milligram of fluoride, and the FDA requires a warning on the tube not to swallow that much fluoride, but the city of Mercer Island puts about the same amount of fluoride in each glass of water. The FDA warns, 'Do not swallow the same amount of fluoride, as the city says you have no choice but to swallow.' The world countries of the world have reduced dental caries to similar levels regardless of fluoridation, and most European dental associations no longer recommend fluoride supplements. There are better ways to reduce tooth decay. The risks from fluoridated water are serious, especially for the developing brain. Brains are more important than teeth. People should have freedom to choose. If people want fluoride, they can swallow a pea-sized amount of toothpaste.
Sir, your three minutes is up. Would you perhaps wrap up your comments?
All right, thank you. Yeah, in closing, I would just like to say that he has, Mr., Dr. Osmussen, is asking for you to put him on an agenda for 45-minute presentation. He'll present it with photographs and images and graphs. Thank you. And who do I hand this?
Hand it to the clerk, please.
Clerk, okay.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the council? Please come forward.
Hello. My name's Audrey Adams. I am on the board of the Washington Action for Safe Water, but my primary job is the mother of an adult with autism. And I'm here to represent those children and adults with neurological disorders, and especially those on the autism spectrum, because I discovered something. When my son was about 14-years-old, he was in profound pain, constant pain, screaming pain, pounding pain, racing pain, completely unmanageable. I'm sure you are aware of individuals with autism, though you can imagine when they're 220 pounds and screaming. I discovered, thanks to a friend in Portland, who has four children, two of them with autism, that I should take him off of tap water. Well, water's the only thing he drinks, because he is profoundly chemically sensitive to any chemical. But I hadn't imagined that he could be sensitive to the water that he was drinking. I took him off of fluoridated water, and this is after I've done tremendous interventions to try to restrict chemical exposures, any foods that might have any reactivity, any chemicals whatsoever, any preservatives. And his pain level went right down. It was pretty amazing to me. So things went along pretty well until he was around age 23, and he'd gradually been getting more pain again because his body was getting less capable of detoxing chemicals. Now, this is all recorded in his medical records that he's profoundly chemically sensitive. Anyway, but I couldn't figure out why, every morning before he went to work, and he works at Highline Community College, why he had profound headache every morning. And another woman, also with a child of autism, happened to see something I wrote to, a letter to the editor, and looked me up and called me, and she told me about her son and her own reactions to showering in fluoridated water. So, that, my friends, was not something I wanted to hear, because that meant that if he was, in fact, reacting to the shower, then that meant I would have to give him baths in bottled water, heating it on the stove. How else could I avoid the fluoridated water? Because it doesn't come out with the normal filters. You can't get it out with a chlorine filter. Bottom line.
Your time's up. Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Yes. I would like to ask the city of Mercer Island and council members here to please petition the city of Seattle's, SPU, Seattle Public Utilities, to deliver non-fluoridated water to you. Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council? Yes, sir. Please approach the microphone.
I don't have a prepared message for you, but I have looked at a lot of evidence online and having talked to people in the community, and I've found that, I think, the fluoridation issue is a real suspect one. And that is because...
Sir, would you give your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Paul Frazier, and I live in Seattle, Washington. Okay. And so, there's a, I looked up on, I just, this is what I want. I want the fluorid, sodium fluoride, fluoride elements in the water to be taken out until a good study can be done, we can see what we're dealing with here. Because I feel that there's, the potential for risk for health concerns is great. The possibility of cancer, the possibility of autism, you name it, cracking bones, there's all kinds of problems. That's why I want our water to be fluoride-free. And so, this is a quote from Dr. Jan De Vries. That's a PhD, oh, she has a PhD, and she's ND. She said, "I was," quote, "I was very shocked that when you people in Toronto," she's speaking of people of Canada, "I was shocked that you poor people in Toronto have to drink this water. We have a tremendous fight in Holland, which we won. The fluoride water is a chemical soft-working tranquilizer. Hitler put fluoride in the water to keep his prisoners quiet, and the same thing happens in other parts of the world. If I put a homeopathic remedy in this water, the remedy is destroyed. If you can work at getting this out of your water in any way at all, I would be very happy." End quote. That's, I think that's very telling. Another quote here is Dr. William Ellis, D.O. He says, quote, "The Environmental Protective Agency in the United States has shown that water in the 90 largest cities in the United States all cause cancer. It's been proven in U.S. federal court that fluoridation is an inorganic form, which is the end product of aluminum manufacturing, is a cancer-causative agent." End quote. And I got these quotes from the consumerhealth.org website, which I feel is, looks reputable. And there's one more thing I'd like to read here. Dr. William Morse, DC, he's a DC and ND, said, quote, "Fluoride hardens the arteries, and it does a lot more damage. It's toxic, but it happens to be a waste product of a very influential type of industry. We don't need fluoride in our water. It's an infringement on our freedom. That's what the consumer health is all about. We must make our rights known, and we must fight for it. Air and water are our first..."
Sir, your time's up. Could you wrap up your comments, please?
Thank you very much for listening to our concerns about fluoride. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council? And please state your name and address here for the record first.
I'm Olimona Peters from Redmond, and I would also like to speak about water fluoridation, to say that the dose cannot be controlled. An adult who sits all day, even in an air-conditioned office, and then goes home and sits in front of a TV all night, already drinks around two liters of water and other liquids. That is eight, eight-ounce glasses of water. Two liters of water is two milligrams of fluoride. A baby drinks 2.5 times as much liquids as an adult per body weight. A baby who drinks formula mixed with tap water is drinking the equivalent of five parts per million fluoride per day. Diabetics can drink 10 times as much water as ordinary people, 20 liters per day, and they would be getting the 20 milligrams of fluoride per day, the equivalent of a sedentary person drinking water at 10 parts per million. Construction people and farmers who work in the sun and sweat a lot can easily drink 20 liters of water per day. Athletes can easily drink 20 liters of water per day. The point is that regulating the concentration does nothing to protect the susceptible populations, those who drink more water, particularly those who cannot afford to buy bottled water. Also, fluoride, lead, and arsenic accumulate over the years. The body has trouble, increasing trouble, excreting them. Many of the members of this city council, when you get into your 70s and 60s and 70s, may have arthritis, kidney problems, and other symptoms caused by fluoride. Your lifespans may be shortened. You may have Alzheimer's symptoms, and you may live out your days in an old folks' home, not knowing who your relatives are. I personally have learned the hard way through food allergies and intolerances that, once I climbed out of them, I built back my body chemistry so that I can eat safely. My quickest way back into them is to drink fluoridated water for even half a day. And a lot of the signals my body gives for those problems are the same ones that are listed as fluoride defects. So I hope you'll decide to relieve the citizens of Mercer Island of this toxin in the water supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, please address the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is James Robert Deal, attorney. I'm from Linwood. And I'm the president of FluorideClassAction.com, and I'm the vice president of Washington Safewater.com. The full name is Washington Action for Safe Water. Now, we're from all different communities, and only one of the people who spoke here tonight is actually from Mercer Island. But Washington Action for Safe Water represents Washington Action for Safe Water members here in Mercer Island. So that's why we've come, and we're going to continue doing this once a month, to make you aware of this issue. Now, I speak from a lawyer's point of view. What can you do? Seattle puts the fluoride in your water. What you ought to do is talk to your city attorney about this and have him write a letter and say, "We have just grounds for being concerned about this, but we could get sued, and we want you to indemnify us and hold us harmless." And the second thing is, it would not be too much trouble for you to take one of those pipes and put non-fluoridated water in it and let Mercer Island have non-fluoridated water, because Mercer Island citizens had no opportunity to vote on this issue back when Seattle decided to foist it upon you. Now, even though Seattle's putting the stuff in your water, you are legally responsible to put the lead notice in your utility bills. And that's in the paperwork that I'm going to hand out to you. And there's lead being added to the water, and it leaches the lead out of the pipes. The particular type of fluoride used, silica fluoride, is really good at leaching the lead out of the pipes. And you'll remember I mentioned that in Seattle, they had 1,600 parts per billion lead in school drinking water. So any old building, old apartment building, old house, you can expect to have a lot of lead in the water, and it dumbs your kids down. Now, there's a lawsuit that's been filed in Maryland against Gerber Baby Water, and the significance for you is that Gerber Baby Water is .8 parts per million. You know, your drinking water is about .8 part per million silica fluoride. So this lady, her mother, years ago, said, "This is great for kids, Gerber Baby Water, .8 parts per million." And that's exclusively what she used to give her baby water and to mix up the formula. So this lady drank Gerber Baby Water as a child exclusively, the same concentration of fluoride in your water. So this is a big lawsuit. It's a slam dunk lawsuit. And they could sue the city of Mercer Island the same way that they're suing Gerber. So ask for indemnity, and you guys did not run for office for the money. This is a hard job you've got. It takes up a lot of your time, and it's stressful. You ran because you care for this city. So we're asking you, and we're here as friends, not as adversaries, to open your minds to this issue and to represent your city.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council? Okay, hearing's seen none. We close the public hearing, appearances, and the next item on the agenda are the study session regular meeting minutes of October 3rd. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
One quick one. I noted that Mr. Grady was down, is attending the study session, but I think he came in a little later, as the minutes further down the page reflect.
I can make that adjustment.
So noted.
So I don't get credit for that? Geez. I tell ya.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tosed. Okay, moving right along here, the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second? Is there discussion?
I just have a question on the signature for certification of claims, that second one. Is that a cut-and-paste signature that we've got there from the director?
From the finance director?
Right.
No, that's probably an electronic signature.
Yep.
Yes.
We are trying to be more efficient and not have as much paper. So he views it electronically, and then we put his electronic signature on it once he's approved it.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All opposed. Consent calendar is done. Okay, moving right along, agenda bill, 467, proposed amendment to singular site lease agreement regarding wireless communication facilities at least Park.
That was on the consent calendar.
Pardon?
It was on the consent. Oh, excuse me, yeah, okay, we did that. Great. Great, great. So agenda bill 4678. This is an update on the Mercer Island Communities That Care Coalition. So we have Cindy Goodwin. Cindy, what do you have for us?
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for your time this evening to address you on the Communities That Care. We were here the last time in January of 2010, and tonight we're going to give you an update and talk about the future direction. And for the record, Cindy Goodwin, the Director for the Department of Youth and Family Services. And on the screen, as you can see, we have our logo, which we have on everything that we put out there, and we do that so that people know when we, when they see a message, regardless of what type of message it is, it's coming from one source, and it's a community endeavor. Before I get into the agenda bill, in the agenda bill, I really tried to outline the history for you, what we've done recently, the data that we're taking a look at right now. We didn't give you a lot of data. We just gave you the update on where we've seen some changes in the data, and then we gave you the future direction and where we're going. And before I, before I get into taking a look at the specifics, I just want to give you a perspective in why we're doing the activities that we do. As you, you read, there were three pages, and we really gave an outline of where we spend our time. And I want you to think of it as a lot of other health issues. And we often think of it as the issue of secondhand smoke. I think before, in the past two to three decades, you would see smoking in movies. You would see it in advertising and magazines. You'd see it in schools, restaurants, on planes. People smoked everywhere. And people actually didn't think that much about smoking. And it was thought to be calming, that if you were upset, you would have a cigarette. People did it at hospital. They did it while they were on guard, on watch. You could buy cigarettes anywhere. If you remember, they were right out there on the counter. And in fact, they gave away little packets of three or four, and they would hand them to us, and we were in elementary school, and we would save them for the adults in our lives. But basically, people didn't think that much about smoking. Then there were messages began to come out about the health about smoking. And later on, I'd say in the past two, three decades, they started to talk about secondhand smoke. And that was really a shift, because we knew that it hurt the smokers. But to get across the idea that it hurt the other people who were in the room, that's kind of radical. It's kind of like you were like, why are you telling somebody to put out their cigarettes? So it was really a different way to look at the issue. But with the, it was the same kind of phenomena. People came around this issue, much like the research behind bringing people together for underage drinking. So they started to talk about how expensive it was. The health costs related to secondhand smoke were in the billions. They started to talk about how children grew up, growing up in homes like that, were at great risk for asthma. It affected the stroke rate, the heart rate. Basically, the impact on our nation's health was really high. So you had people come and talk about these. If you remember people's reaction to this, it was really, you know, why are, how can you even broach this issue? Do you remember people, kids could smoke outside, there was a smoking area. It was really, you know, why would you even talk about this? It's a privilege to smoke. We can make up our own mind. High schoolers, you know, they're, they can think about it. They can, they can determine whether they smoke. It's not, it's not as bad as a mind-altering substance. And people really kind of poo-pooed the whole idea of secondhand smoke. And how we came around it as a community was the same slow process. It was about telling people repeatedly, it was getting the medical profession so that people brought up, "Do you smoke? Can I help you, can I help you stop smoking?" The Surgeon General put more information about secondhand smoke on packages. There were no more smoking areas on planes. Then there are laws passed that you couldn't, you couldn't smoke in restaurants. Business community came around it. They eliminated it from the malls. They eliminated it from almost anywhere you were. You'd have to be even farther away from the door. So we began to look at it. Elected officials voted to make it a, make it a, illegal to smoke if you're under 18, illegal to sell to people under 18, and that to smoke in public buildings, what became an offense. And it was, it was really all of us coming together and getting people to have the same information, the same message consistently from many different avenues, and hitting that tipping point where it began, where you began, "Yeah, you're right. We don't want anybody to have secondhand smoke." So I put that... So, I put that there just because I want to tell you that what we're doing, same thing with seat belts. If you remember, babies used to go home in the backseat on the back of the driver's seat on the floor for a lot of families. And now, you have to have a car seat. Heart disease, obesity, all of these things, we all know these issues and how people approach them. So, that's what we're doing on this island. So, as I go over the different activities that we've been doing the past year and a half, as I take you looking forward, know that everything that we're doing is trying to set up clear messages, consistent messages, messages that are repetitive, but messages that say the same thing from the same group, that you can trust the data, because we want a tipping point. We want everybody here to say, "Yeah, you're right. We've got a lot of great things going on. I don't know what I was thinking." That's what we want to have happen here. So, as I go over these activities, that's what we really like to bear in mind. So, our activities over the past year and a half have been in about five areas. We've done a lot in messaging, the Social Norms Campaign that you've seen, Most of Us. I'm going to have Derek show you some of those posters that have gone out. The Most of Us Campaign that's gone out on Mercerdale sign, middle and high school locations all throughout the school, 25 businesses on the island, the intersection, the reader boards, city hall, city park kiosks, food and beverage containers. They're on King County Transit and Light Rail signs for people who do public transportation. We've had articles in The Weekly since 2009. We've done forums in The Reporter. We try to do them in the fall when kids go back to school, any kind of topic that's relevant that's coming up in the community or any activity that where there's a lot of risk behaviors. This summer, we did something called Mercer Menucha. You might have seen it in restaurants. It's modeled after Trivial Pursuit. There are cards that you pick up, and you've got facts about Mercer Island that are trivia, very interesting. And then, we throw in information on underage drinking. And we do that so that you're learning it as you're talking about interesting things on the island. You talk about underage drinking or what you can do. And as with any health behavior, you want to come at people's side. You want to talk about how not doing it is really in line with your strengths. So, those are some of the things that we do in messaging. And again, consistent, clear, with trusted sources. Done a lot in the realm of parent education and support, and I think we listed some there. Part of what we asked for the last time we came to was to please endorse the development of an ad hoc parenting group, and then to endorse the messages that they came up with. So, over the past year, we had a group of approximately 10 to 12 parents, and they were, most were professionals or parents, came together and looked at if they were to come around any parenting issue that they thought would get at the crux of how we parent and how we could raise children who don't use substances and drink underage. They chose the item of resiliency, for some kids that could come back, could take responsibility for their actions, and succeed and need no kind of, how can I say it? No kind of crutch, that could really go on and succeed, be resilient adults. So, that was the parenting group. That group from that came a parent and professional think tank. And they're the folks that are getting together to take a look at what will do with that information. Part of it will be parenting prevention. We are getting out the materials that they developed that are quick, easy to access to all of the coaches, the people who do parenting workshops on the island, and all of parents at different ages, because we divided it into ages, and really getting out this information with one clear message to everybody on the island. This group would also like to take up the idea of doing an annual campaign, that everybody who works with youth, whether it's the medical community, whether it is counselors, coaches, people in the school, that each year, there's something related to parenting that will help you in raising kids who are resilient and don't use drugs or alcohol. So, keeping this focus on how we parent and how we raise children in a positive light and ongoing. The other, probably one of the bigger pieces for us in the area of parent education is really speaking to as many parents as we can and always going with them with new information that we get and kind of helping them monitor how we're doing on the island. So, we speak to the parent peer groups of all ages, from middle school to high school. We speak to the PTAs, to, we are at summer celebration. We coordinate with the drug and alcohol counselors for parents needing any kind of assistance. We send out the city, with the police, with the school, and the fire community, the high school principal, middle school principal, around the time of prom sends out an annual letter saying how to have safe parties, how to monitor your kids, what you should be looking for. We took your advice and made sure that we included in that a brochure on how to have, how to use prom services, I'm sorry, not prom services, car services that are legitimate so that kids don't drink while they're in cars, in town cars. We have homecoming safe party hosting guidelines. So, we've done a number of information that as we change the information that goes out there and has the community start to thinking about the issue of underage drinking, that we're helping parents parent to raising kids that are not drinking underage. The next area we looked at is underage, the underage drinking ordinance. We brought something to you within the past month. We're coming back with that to take a look at social hosting. I think you're all familiar with that, making it a misdemeanor, making it a fine. I want to say that that got a lot of press, and I'd like to say something about the press because it was unplanned. We had no idea the amount of calls and the amount of press coverage we would get from that, and we did no press release. One of the, all of the responses to that were positive. Everybody we spoke with, Ken Schramm, Dora Monstrant, everybody supported it in the news. And if we heard anything, it was that the fine wasn't high enough. They really felt like 250 wasn't enough. We explained to them what we were limited to buy. But I want to say that to get that kind of response, that unanimous support was really something we were quite surprised. We have since spoken to the King County Council of the Whole. We were invited to speak by Jane Hay to the King County Council, talking with them about the work that we're doing and how we're reaching out to other Eastside communities. And I want to make sure that you all know, whenever we speak about underage drinking in Mercer Island, we really are careful to give context, because our kids look like any other kid on the Eastside. We mirror the Eastside, and we mirror many other communities. And we make sure that they know that our kids play together, they compete against each other, they go to college together, but some of them drink together. And it's not the majority, but it's important to know that if we can help other communities come around this issue and work with King County and other cities, we're going to do that. Because if those kids succeed and all of our kids are together, we'll all succeed. So, there's some of the, in the legal realm. We also did, we've had youth come to city council, and we've done that because we want youth to feel that we're invested in them and that you're invested in them, and want to make sure that you, as electeds, hear from the youth and how they're experiencing that issue on our community. We did a prevention forum with Nancy Lee facilitating it so that we can have a think tank for community members saying, "This is how I think you should come around the issue in my community." That then is put into our work plan. We're planning another one for 2012 so that we can get people together in the community and help us. Part of what Communities That Care does is we take on activities that we think will have an impact on our community in some way. We evaluate them, we adjust them, and we do them again. So, we have a constant feedback loop. We send out surveys to almost everyone. We do many, many café conversations, and we're, it's a very alive process. The Communities That Care itself is a validated model. It's a public health model. But the work that we do is very much alive, and it's really full of community input and try to keep that going.
Cindy, I'm sure a council would like to weigh in here with questions and comments. So, hopefully, you're wrapped up with your comments and...
Yeah, you know, I think what we, absolutely. Let me have Derek go over the substance use trends, and then I think what we'd like to do is maybe just show you some of the posters that we've done so you can get a good feel for what's going out there, what people are seeing, and what we're trying to get out there as a consistent message. And then, maybe, if you, a lot of what we're doing is listed in the agenda bill. So, if you'd rather go to questions, let's do that. That might be the most helpful.
Let's finish up with your slides and so on, and Derek, your input too, and then we'll just, then we'll go to questions and comments.
Great, thank you, Cindy. For the record, Derek Franklin, manager at Youth and Family Services and Project Director for the Communities That Care grant. The slide before you is, just points out trends in prevention work. It's important to look longitudinally, look at baseline, look at where you're coming from. Alcohol, marijuana, prescription drugs, and cigarettes are listed here. We have data for others. Alcohol, marijuana are the two substances used the most in this community by kids. Trends for alcohol, the blue line, or the blue line to the right indicating 2010 data, that 44% represents about a 10% drop from 2006, which we're, I think, most happy about when we look at the numbers in 2010. That's significant. The numbers before you, as it says in the title, are 12th graders, and that's really kind of the benchmark for us. Those kids typically use the most and are about ready to launch into adulthood. To see that drop was really positive for us. Marijuana use is essentially flat. Marijuana use around the nation, around the county, around the city is trending upward. So, to stay flat, we're pleased with. We'd love to see it go down. Prescription drugs, similarly. There's a trend upward around the county, around the country for prescription drug use and abuse by minors. To be essentially flat here is also a positive, but again, we'd love to see that go down. And finally, cigarette use has been falling nationally. It's falling here as well. And that's sort of a snapshot about where we are.
Derek, you really need to explain, I think, what we're looking at, especially, not only for the council, but also for the very concerned parents out there on just what, for instance, marijuana 30% means. Explain, please explain what those numbers mean.
So, the numbers represent the percentage of students reporting positively on a survey, the Washington State Healthy Youth Survey, that in the past 30 days, they've used the substance listed. So, in this case, 31% of Mercer Island 12th grade students have reported that in 2010. In the past 30 days, often referred to as a typical month, they have used marijuana.
Okay, are you through your presentation, Derek?
Without...
Okay, great. And so...
Yeah, I just thought that might be of interest to you so you can see the clear and consistent messages going in. I think basically, I think for this agenda bill, what we're trying to say is that we're doing more of the same because it's a long-term change, and we want the same message out there repeatedly, clear with good data. So, I think this is listed a lot in your books. One of the things that we're trying, that we've been asked to do is more parenting forums, getting out information and including discussions there. I hope when the council considers again whether they'll use technology, we've had a request to use this room to do forums so that parents who can't come, they have kids at home, we do it at different times, that that might eventually, once that's broached...
I'd like to jump in, Cindy, real quickly there. Cindy had an opportunity recently to broadcast a forum on underage drinking, substance abuse here out of the council chambers, and asked me whether or not she could do that. And I went back and researched the council's decisions, both recent and then going back a couple of years, about use of MITV, the policies, broadcasting, communications. And I had to conclude from those various discussions and votes that I didn't have the authority to say yes to that, although it wasn't as clear as I'd like it to be to say yes or no. There was nothing in any of those votes or discussions that would suggest saying yes. So, I feel it's important for you to think about that and give us some guidance, because it's clearly, well, I won't try to characterize what it is, but it came up as a question, and I couldn't say yes, given your past votes.
So, Rich, that's a good point, and that's just a topic for future council consideration. There's two parts to that. The use of this room, and we do have, vague as it may be, a policy on broadcasting, what, when, and how. And then, there's the cost issue, because we have been very strict about costs here of late, and where the money, what's in the budget, and what's available. So, it's really a two-part issue.
It's three issues. It's cost, it's use of this room, and it's how do we use MITV? Because people could come to us with a videotape, say, "We've already paid for all the production costs. Just plug it into the machine and broadcast it." And it's, one of your discussions and votes on that suggested the answer was no, or sort of no. So, we need some guidance here, some future date, but it was a good question Cindy brought up.
Okay, are you finished with your presentation, Cindy?
Yeah, you know, we're really fine. No, I think that it's in here. I just want to say that when we take a look at the future, we hope that, we want to see the underage drinking be as low as the, as smoking. That's really low on Mercer Island. That's a good measure. That the overall health safety is enhanced. We have a variety of risk behaviors that have decreased, and that people are coming around, that parents, you know, no longer, that every parent knows that they're the most important person that affects their kids drinking, that it's not better to drink at home, that European youth don't have lower drinking rates, that we all didn't drink like those kids in high school, that medical providers do routine screening, that as a coach, you would monitor someone's use if they had an infection, just like you would with their concussion before they went back on the field, that more merchants are concerned about how alcohol is sold, that teachers know how to identify it, and that every adult has a role in this. So, that's what our messaging is. I'm going to have Derek speak with you about these messages, and know that we're trying to put these messages in the community so that if you don't see it in the high school, you'll see it at QFC. And when you see it at QFC, it's the same thing that you saw on the corner. But eventually, you start thinking about it. And then, when you see it in the news, you say, "Oh, yeah, that's happening." And then, when you see that those national endeavors going on about drugs draw the line or start talking now, you know that there's a big concerted effort, much like there was over the past decade, so that you don't smoke around young children. So, I'm going to have Derek just talk about these signs and the work that goes into them.
Thank you, Cindy. And I can do this quickly to give the council flavor for the messaging that we have going on. These are part of our Social Norms Campaigns, again, focused on what's working in the community as a way to shift that norm a little bit. These are focused at high school kids, junior high kids, and parents. Again, some examples of messages in IMS middle school and at the high school, focusing on the numbers of kids that are doing it right, 15 out of 20. So, again, focusing on the majority is part of the Social Norms strategy to shift that use. We can use the same strategy with alcohol, marijuana, tobacco, depending on the numbers and where there's the biggest misperception of those norms. Here are some posters that the kids came up with at, on the right at high school, they wanted to focus on some tobacco use and thought that dip or chewing tobacco was most problematic. The kids in the middle school came up with the game of life, which we all thought was particularly creative, again, pointing out that most kids in their school choose to make healthy behaviors. You've seen perhaps around the communities, Let's Draw the Line Campaign, that's the theme for us for this year, and it's in line with the state campaign for Let's Draw the Line between kids and alcohol. This is the sign that's at Mercerdale Park, and again, example of the community messaging that we do. And that's all. Hand it back to Cindy for questions.
That's it. That's really, that's what we're doing. That's what you kind of endorsed us to do, and we'd like to continue the work. And if there's anything that you'd like to give us as far as feedback or what you'd like to see, please tell us your impressions, and if you have any questions, we'd like to entertain them. Yeah.
Okay, Mike?
Cindy, thanks again for your update and all the great work. Two questions. One, as we all know, it's homecoming this weekend, so what special events are planned for this project around homecoming? And that, I'm hoping, involves our chief of police and some targeted enforcement. So, if you could address that. And then, I note that the data was focusing on 12th grade students, but in your agenda packet, you noted that alcohol use for eighth graders is increasing. So, could you speak to the trends you're seeing at the eighth grade level as well? Thank you.
I can speak to that, because I spoke with, we've spoke with folks at the middle school. I think the chief will have to address the, you know, police issues related to that. And Derek, if you have anything specific for CTC for this weekend, that would be good to hear. The data at the middle school, we asked, you know, is it really a trend or is it a group? And there's a specific group that they've been having difficulties with this year and last, and they're very much aware of what's going on. We have interventions going on there. But it's sensitive, because we have such a low rate that even a small amount of students using there, it's going to look like we have a huge jump, when in fact, we don't. And they're really, there's a lot of intervention going on there. So, it is up. It's sensitive to that, but we have a very, very low rate of use at the middle school.
Anybody else for question? Bruce?
Ed was going to talk about...
Good evening.
Ed Holmes, police chief, for the record here. Yeah, in the past years, the school typically bring in officers off duty, and the school resource officers typically tied into that as well. So, we have a really good relationship with them and good partnership with that.
Cindy, I was, please, but a little bit surprised to hear that you heard no negative reaction
Cindy, I was pleased, but a little bit surprised to hear that you heard no negative reaction to the hosting ordinance because that means that the grumpy people all contacted me rather than you. So there were a few folks who expressed concerns about that. And I just, I wouldn't want the record to reflect that there weren't any of those. And if they're not contacting you, then we probably need a broader conversation to just make sure those voices are being heard and considered as we move forward. I was a little bit, I'm thrilled about the work you're doing. And I love seeing the signs and I feel like I see them everywhere, which is exactly what you're trying to do. I saw one on a bus and I was wondering whether that was your work or whether some other community was actually picking this up on a broader scale around the region. But it was great to see. But it leads me to ask, what's your level of confidence that we can get continued funding to carry this forward after this current grant runs out next year, right, or at the end of this year?
It's a competitive grant and it's very competitive. I think we're in good stead. We have done everything that we need to, to put us in good positioning for that. We've made headway on some issues. The work that you've done with us as elected officials and joining in us with that and the school, you working with us on the policy level, that's looked at very favorably. So we have really attended to the type of change that our grant maker wants to see. So we feel confident in that way. But again, it's a very competitive grant. There are far fewer given. So I want to say, we don't know. We're giving it our best, we're planning very well, and we are making contingency plans. If we don't get funding there, how would we keep this going? What would we need to do? Because we know that this is a health issue that we and so many people want to see continue. So we're doing both of those.
It doesn't hurt that you were selected by Gil Karlikowski, the nation's drug czar, to present when he was out here last year. So this program has got some national visibility.
It has, yep.
When would you expect you'll have an answer to whether you get that continuation grant?
April.
No, it's, you filed by April, I think.
It is, yep. And then mid next year.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, sir, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, let me just, for one, I think that's a neat way or a productive way to use this facility to publicize or to televise unedited, if you will, public discourse. And that would be a nice step. I think that would be a good use of it, Mr. City Manager. I see on here, let's see, on page four, where you talk about our seniors being statistically higher, much higher. Where do I see that? For alcohol use, did I read that correctly? What's going on with that? Do you have any idea? There it is. I'm sorry, it's on page three. Mercer Island 12th grade students have used alcohol at rates significantly exceeding that of the state average. Any ideas about that?
On why the alcohol rate is up?
Well, I mean, why it's significantly higher than the rest of the state.
Well, yes. And I'd like to put us in a category with all the populations that mirror us. So the east side, east coast communities, east coast private schools. And there's a lot of thought about why the affluent youth drink more than those of other groups. It's the most accessible, easily to access. It's a group where they have a number of really positive protective factors. And it goes masked, it's unidentified. These are our high achieving kids who are doing really well, who go on and aren't brought to anybody's attention. They're not dropping out, they're not falling through cracks. So in some ways, they're less visible. And then there are certain aspects of growing up in our communities that are very stressful. So there are some root causes that we take a look at and you find them in communities very similar to ours.
I'd like to make comment about the eighth graders with the marijuana use that you said that wasn't that high. I think at eighth grade, that is high, at 4%, 4%, 6%. And that's kind of disturbing to me. And also, the marijuana use at 30% for 12th graders are high. You know, I attended with Derek, what was that show, not show, but?
A showing of the Plunk Truth, which was a national.
Right, the Showing of the Plunk Truth. And it had this article right here. Does that ring a bell?
Correct.
Which would really be useful, I think, for the generation on this dais right here to read and understand. Because I think that marijuana use, as you allude here on the paragraph before that, especially with the legalization of marijuana, there's a softening of attitudes that you put on here. And that certainly, this article right here certainly dispels that. So, yeah, we've got to stay on this.
Okay, anybody else, a question or comments?
I'd just like to say, I applaud both of you. It's very interesting to see the whole range and the whole variety of many activities that are going on with the same kind of consistent message. But you mentioned that CTC typically initiates an activity, then evaluates it, and then repeats it. Have there been activities that you've identified that have been particularly successful or others that maybe you've eliminated because they haven't been as effective or successful? You know, in looking back.
And chiming in here, Derek, I think that we did a number of café conversations and people liked that. They would talk to their friends more. That was really useful. Getting out to, getting information out about the specific areas of concern, so the Knights of Terror, that was really helpful. When we give messages on the back, giving strategies, tell me how to do a party, how to host a party where there's no, where there's no alcohol served or where it's okay for me to search backpacks. So telling people what to do was really, really helpful. So the café conversations were very effective, the community forums were effective in getting people to talk. And I think a lot of what we do when we evaluate and do it again is our messaging and the posters that we use. That's a lot of what we do. Or our written materials, we put it out there and we see how people respond to it. And then in speaking with groups, we ask them what kind of information they need and they tell us and we develop materials. So Derek, do you have anything to add?
I have one other question, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sir?
And I have one other question. That is, when, why don't we, or will we ever get dogs? And I mean, you show that high schools use marijuana at 30%. That's high, I think. When will we ever get dogs into the high school so that we can tell her parents that that school is clean?
Is that directed toward me?
That's, that would be it.
That would be it, yeah.
Whoever would like to answer that?
Is that, that would be a decision the school board.
Have we entertained that with the school board?
We have broached it. I don't know the last time we have, but that would be a discussion we'd have to have with the schools.
All right, let me ask you a question there, chief, just to help service it a little bit. With the 30% use of marijuana used by our high school, or, let me be, by our 30%, said they had used marijuana in the last 30 days when that survey was given. What is your level of confidence that there's no marijuana in the high school?
I could speculate here and try to put a number on it, but I won't. I think what I'll do instead is say, I can't say with any absolute certainty that there are no drugs in our high school, or for that matter, any high school.
And let me ask you another question. If the dogs went through, you know, during the summer months, when there aren't any kids there, if the dogs went through the high school, what's the level of precision that those dogs have that you could then say that there are no drugs in the high school?
You know, I'd probably be more comfortable talking to a drug handler who handles the drug dogs. I mean, typically, they're pretty good at what they do.
Right.
Mike, why would there be any drugs at the high school in the summer when there are no students there?
Left, no, I wasn't going that way. Just leftover. No, I mean, you can identify residual drugs and whatnot. Okay, maybe something to think about there, Cindy and crowd.
Okay, if there are no further questions or comments, thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Derek. Excellent presentation. We're now well informed. Oh, you have another comment, Bruce?
The other thing, I want to echo Mike Zero's comment that I would like to see us put on our work plan, something about using these chambers for other activities and so to ensure that staff could.
So I would think the, Bruce, given the fact that the work plan is pretty well set for the rest of the year, that that would be something to tee up for. That's a planning session in January and get it there.
That's what I was trying to say.
Okay. I think we're all on the same page there. Okay, thanks again, folks. Moving right along here, if I'm correct, Agenda Bill 4677, zoning text amendment to remove the requirement that wireless communication facility antennas in the Island Crestway corridor meet the definition of microcells. So, Ganna.
Good evening. I'm Shanna Crick, planner with the City of Mercer Island. I have a short presentation, since this is the second reading, just summarizing the changes as requested by the council during the first reading. The proposal is for, is to remove the requirement that wireless communication facility antennas in the Island Crestway corridor not be required to be microcells. And just a quick summary, the, both our definition section of the code, MI CC 19.16.010, as well as state law in WAC 19711825 defines microcell as either an antenna that is no longer than six feet in length and not greater than four inches in diameter, or no greater than 580 square inches in the aggregate as viewed from any one point, and no longer than four feet. And just once again to summarize, the blue areas represent the parts of Mercer Island where wireless facilities are allowed and there are no size restrictions. It is limited by things like height. And the orange represents the Island Crestway corridor where antennas are required to be microcells. It was requested that we bring some examples of microcells. So many of you may have seen these. The ones on the sides are both on Island Crestway. So you'll see in a moment, I have a diagram that resembles the one on the left side. And then you might recognize the one in the middle, it's right next door. All four of those are microcells. And going back to a previous comment, it was brought up, it was brought up during the last meeting that there were no controls over size in the Island Crestway corridor if you were just to, if you want to set specific dimensions. And regardless, the allowed height of the utility poles in the Island Crestway corridor sets it for itself. There's a required 10-foot separation between the PSC lines and any wireless facility. And then at a bare minimum, you're going to have a six-foot vertical separation between the antennas. So as you can see, if you allow, I mean, as is actually on the 70-foot poles, or you're allowed to have a support structure up to 70 feet, at a particular point on Island Crestway, around 4600 block, you couldn't even put antennas on top of the power lines. You'd have to actually locate them below. And if you co-located and extended that pole up to 110 feet, you could potentially fit three antenna arrays. The code, as it exists and as proposed, would allow the code official to determine that the site is full at six antennas. So it may not even get to this point. So staff revised the proposed code text amendment. And we kept in the language that was stricken, meet the definition of microcells and. We also included dimensional standards, looking over, discussing with the applicant, you know, what the requirements are currently for antennas, and also looking over other projects. We kept in, or we included that wireless facility antennas shall not exceed 96 inches in length, 12 inches in width, and 12 inches in depth. And that encompasses most of the antennas that come through DSG right now. The only other reference to microcell in the code is actually in the definition section. So we struck that as well. And this is the recommended motion as shown in the agenda bill. And I would be happy to take any questions. Also, the applicant is here, so if he has questions of a more technical nature, I'm sure he's happy to come up and answer those.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt ordinance number 11C-11 as presented in exhibit one to AB 4677, thus amending Mercer Island City Code 19.06.040C1 and 1916010W to remove the microcells requirement for wireless communication facility antennas in the Island Crestway corridor.
Second.
And that's the second by Mr. Grady. Okay, so as you recall, we addressed this, we, the council, addressed this, had a first reading on October 3rd. This is the second reading. We did get a email, I think we all got copied on email, from Emmett Maluth, the chairman of the design commission, suggesting we may not want to allow some additional flexibility in the size of the microcells. I wonder if staff has an opinion on that matter, whether or not that might be a good idea?
Obviously, it's difficult to foresee what applicants are going to request in the future and where technology is going. But we would be happy to.
The suggestion, I think we're all copied on his email, was that maybe we go a bit beyond 96 inches in height to another foot or two. It seems to me it's a technical issue about bandwidth, which goes right by me. I don't have a clue what the connection might be. Maybe you could elucidate us on that?
Yeah, just for the record, just to stay our principal planner, there's two things, and we'll have the applicant discuss that briefly. I think there's something before you that the applicant recently submitted about bandwidth and the requirement of cell size that's before you. I'm sure he'd be happy to summarize it. Additionally, there was some concern about the total height allowed. Shanna did a great job of explaining. There really is a height restriction in the total size of these antennas allowed strictly because of the height of the wires on Island Crestway and the limit to the height of the pole and required.
So we're proposing 96 inches and so are you suggesting that that's a maximum in the physical space available?
No, there would be some room left over. There'd be approximately 11 feet left over if you had eight feet. So there would be some room to grow if the code allowed that.
Well, that's the question here. Do we want to increase 96, go beyond 96 inches?
I think it would be appropriate to ask the applicant.
Okay, with the.
Good evening, ma'am. I'm Ken Lyons with Bush Law Group, representing AT&amp;T. Yeah, I mean, I think I made the point in the last council meeting that aside from the antenna height, there are other practical, physical restrictions that would, you know, eliminate, you know, perhaps the worst-case scenario that was suggested at the last council meeting, that somehow we might have 20 or 30-foot antennas, just because simply there would not be space, given the overall height limitations for facilities along Island Crestway, the location of the wires, the required separation distances and the like. That's why we had originally proposed just striking the definition of microcell. But with regard to AT&amp;T's current technology and its antenna sizes, we don't take issue with the 96-inch limitation, the 12-foot limitation, sorry, 8-foot limitation, 12 inches wide, 12 inches depth. Because as far as we can foresee, that provides, allows us to put antennas in that would allow us to provide coverage at the 700 band that we got the LTE spectrum from in the SEC auction.
Okay, thanks, sir. Questions from the council, Bruce?
So you've got the 700 megahertz band. Is it likely that there's somebody else out there getting the 600 megahertz band and therefore in trouble without the ability to go longer than 96 inches? And I didn't say it very well last time, but I think that's where, obviously Emmett said it better than I did, and you've spoken to it in your letter. But that's what I wanted to try and understand last time is this question of, is there somebody else out there who's going to be the next person knocking on the door here who's going to say, gee, I need a little bit more length because of the technology that I'm in the business of using?
Yeah, I think that's a very good question. Just so you know, the 700 band was the, kind of the old television bands that were, you know, basically, you know, abandoned or, you know, the SEC has, you know, made available. And all the carriers, I mean, all the major carriers picked up spectrum in that, inside that 700 band. That includes Sprint and Verizon, AT&amp;T, even the Dish Network even got a slice of that, as well as the infamous Light Squared. You know, they also took a little bit of that as well. So that's the spectrum, as far as we can foresee, that's been auctioned. Whether or not the SEC auctioned something in the lower band, I can't necessarily speculate to that. Again, as a point of note, we didn't propose. Again, it's important to note, we didn't propose necessarily the limitation, you know, just because we thought there were other physical limitations that would prevent perhaps a worst-case scenario. But, you know, with regard to the technology we currently have, and the spectrum working in, you know, eight-feet height is adequate for us at the time.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Jane, anything?
Well, I'm, I'm prepared to go ahead and support this. I think what I hope doesn't happen is we'll get applications from a bunch of other carriers saying, we need, you know, 108 inches, or something a little bit bigger or different. But since we're abandoning the use of the definition of microcell, we've got ourselves in this, so, but I, I'm willing to go ahead with this.
Okay, further comments?
I guess the only other question I wanted to raise, and it's, I sort of a dollar, a day late and a dollar short on this, because I realize, as I've seen about it, it actually probably was more appropriate with the consent calendar bill. But Dan had raised this question of whether the LTE service that's coming represented a new service to the community and something that we ought to be rethinking our rental rates for. And so, I, I think I'm kind of in the wrong spot raising it right now, but I wanted to raise it again and just see whether there's any way that does tie to this, that we should be talking about.
It seems that we're creating, right as we meet here, a parking lot of issues that probably should be addressed next year, starting with a planning session if there's enough support in the council.
Well, and I would certainly advise, I think we need to do a better job of being, and I think I said this two weeks ago, being more strategic in how we look at these telecommunications services and leases, and how we want to, or we're getting the right market rates, when we do, what do we do with the revenue, how do we target it for its maximum use, what are our goals? We're not going to solve it here, but I think we do need to have this conversation, it's one every city's having, because the technology is changing, the costs of doing business are changing, and we need to be on it. And we're, I would say the city is not particularly well organized to do that right now. I think we do it pretty much catch as catch can. We don't have a communications person that would normally take care of this, so, I rest my case.
Okay.
I would support us putting that on the agenda for January, and finding a way to be more strategic about it. I agree with you.
Okay, so, we have a motion that's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving right along. Next is Agenda Bill 4674, zoning text amendments to the MICC Title 19 to change the decision authority for design review of wireless communication facilities and set a fee for wireless communication facility land use permits. And again, this is a second reading, I guess, I think we addressed this also October 3rd, so we're ready to take action here if the council so wishes. George, you have anything to add?
No vote, staff's here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, questions for George?
I have none, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to move to adopt ordinance number 11C-05, amending Mercer Island City Code Sections 19.06.040, comma, 19.15.010E, comma, and 19.16.010, to change the decision authority for design review of wireless communication facilities from the Design Commission to the code official.
Second.
And it's second by Jane.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, Mike Cerro.
Thank you. George, when one of these changes are asked, will there still be a notice put out? You know, the placard that we do?
Yeah, because it's administrative design, or administrative review, so yeah, yes.
And so, there will be opportunity for public comment to the code official on that?
Yep, 200-foot notice that's mailed out to everyone, signed, posted.
Excellent. I also have a question on page five, it is. Where you need the city engineer's approval. Approved by the city engineer, that's very top there, on page five, paragraph two, approval process. Why do you need the city engineer's approval? I would think all you're looking for is a PE stamp on the drawings.
Still trying to catch where you're at, I'm on page five, you're under, what's the number?
Mine. Up at the top.
Oh, yeah.
George, I-
Because you're in the right-of-way, so, we look at the city engineer who handles the right-of-way, make sure he's comfortable where that ball's going.
Okay, so this doesn't have anything to do with the structural integrity of the new-
We've never interpreted it that way.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, other questions, comments? Bruce?
I would just say, as your liaison to the Design Commission, that I've sat through several meetings where they've struggled with these questions of wireless facilities, and they will all be breathing a sigh of relief tonight if we pass this, because they've become quite frustrated dealing with things that, by and large, are really outside the realm of design and more in the realm of staff, so this is a good move.
Yes, that's the sense I get, that they will be totally delighted by this-
Exactly, so, I will support this.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded, further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, so-
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 1442, amending the development and construction fee schedule to include wireless communication facility design review.
Second. Oh, we've got two motions, yeah, okay, good. Okay, Mike Grady made the motion, and the second was Bruce. Okay, any further discussion on the motion?
I'm curious about, I looked at the fee schedule, and throughout, I mean, the numbers just seem so odd to me. There's not a lot of fees that end with a zero or a five. It's like $509 for facilities up to 5,000 valuation. Subdivision of a short plat for two lots, $3,179. It's, it's just funny to me that all the, all the numbers are odd. Is there a history, were they all increased by a little tiny percent at one point, so it made them?
We used to round to the nearest thousand, and maybe that's a little excessive, so-
Actually, Jane, it's a great question. A number of years ago, we brought in a cost accounting firm to actually determine what's the cost of doing business in processing these permits. And, so they looked staff time, and they actually assessed the number of hours and the average staff rates, and they computed out. So, yeah, we don't round it off, we, and then there, we do percentage increases with inflation as well, so it, and we will continue to do it that way, so we can assure the buying public that we're doing this for cost recovery, not just for revenue.
I'm curious, thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously, I believe. Okay, we're now ready to move on to Agenda Bill 4675, zoning text amendments to change-
W3.
W3, excuse me, right, so, I'm going to put these on. The decision authority for design review of minor exterior modifications of regulated improvements in the town center. Now, before anybody makes a motion here, again, we have had, we got an email today from Mr. Emmett Malouf, the Chair of the Design Commission, suggesting maybe that $100,000 was a little on the low side for the definition of minor, and maybe we ought to be thinking about $200,000. So, in, is there a staff reaction to that proposal, and what are staff's thoughts on that?
Can I give a real brief staff report on this one, and then I'll address that one, if that's all right with you?
Oh, okay, good.
I promise to be brief.
Good.
Second reading on this one, again, at the first, the first reading, you guys, council had requested that we come back with some objective criteria to change the level of review for the code official for minor exterior amendments in the town center. So, we did some research on what other jurisdictions require, and looked at that, buildings in the town center, how that would apply, as well as implementing in our current code. So, we did actually have two recommendations for you in here. Staff's recommending the first, I'll get into that a little bit more, you know, in a little bit here. But, your first alternative, which is Exhibit 1, in your, in your packet for this agenda bill, says if it's less than $100,000 in, in valuation, in project valuation, then the code official would review it. Your second option, Exhibit 2, it says, again, code official will review it if it's under $100,000, or it's 500 square feet of gross floor area or less, or the project valuation is 25% of the structure's assessed value. The, so we looked at that with the existing code, and how that would implement it, and the buildings. And we took extreme cases, because sometimes we hear, wait, what about this floral shop that's in the town center, what about the Mercer Phase 1, you know, we took both extremes and took a look at that and how that would apply. And we felt that alternative, 100,000 dollars, was the most straightforward, streamlined way to do that, easiest to implement, and the simplest way for applicants to understand that as well. So, that's how we came up with that number, that's the recommendation we have. So, the motion we have before you in the agenda bill references adopting Exhibit 1. If staff wants, I'm sorry, if city council wants to change that, or adopt Exhibit Number 2, it's a quick change in the, in the motion you've got there. So, can I answer the questions on that?
And the $200,000 proposal?
The, you'd have, there's a couple ways you guys could do that, but you could propose to adopt Exhibit 1 with an amendment to change that to 200,000.
But how would, how would staff react to having that much more latitude or authority?
We touched on this briefly before, I'm comfortable with it, Tim may have a different opinion on this, but we always have the discretion to send this up to the Design Commission if it's, if it's too much of a view on the part.
Yeah, we, Tim Stewart, Director of Development Services Group, we looked at trying to reach a balance, many of the other communities around the area have a dollar value, some, I think, were in the $50,000 range, but Mr. Malouf's observation is a valid one, $100,000 in today's world of commercial development isn't a very big project. So, if you chose to move it up to $200,000, that would certainly be okay with us. The way that you'd do that is simply change the 100 to the 200 in the, in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Tim. So, okay, questions first?
Real quickly, I think George's point, that we always have the authority to, as staff, to seek Design Commission review, is a really important one. What is maybe less important than the dollar amount, it's what is the actual proposal, and if it strikes staff as being controversial, out there on the edge or beyond the edge of what we generally think of as good design in the town center, that's where we get uncomfortable saying we want to do this administratively, and we want to get some, some Design Commission look. So, as long as everybody understands that, there may be a point where it's within a dollar amount, and staff says, ooh, I'm taking this to the commission, that's a-
Well, the issue is, what if it's $150,000, and it's totally routine, non-controversial? The way this is being proposed for adoption is, it has to go to the Design Commission. So, that's the reason for looking at a higher limit is, by that kind of latitude, but now, $101,000, it goes to the Design Commission, right?
Under Option 8, yes.
Okay, so, all right, questions? Jane?
Comment.
Well, let's get the questions out. Mike Cerro.
Thanks. I'd like to, again, ask the same question I asked before, during one of these processes where they ask for a change, there will be a notice put out and distributed 200 feet around for public comment?
So, short answer is no, because under the current code, minor exterior modifications don't require public notice. So, whether you change that dollar amount, or who reviews it, that doesn't change. So, right now, there's certain minor exterior modifications that the Design Commission will review, because it's minor, there's no public notice on it, other than the weekly permit.
But we do public notice on things above minor.
Yes.
The Design Commission does normally take a good, long look at project designs. We're talking about here is the small stuff, somebody wants to come in and change a sign, it's generally thought of as the pretty small stuff, when we don't do a lot of-
Well, I guess I am, wherever, you know, I'm, I feel like I would approve or, in line with Emmett's $200,000 level, but on the flip side of that, when you start hitting against $200,000, your definition of minor kind of changes a little bit. And the purpose of the public notice is to give folks an opportunity to weigh in from perspectives that might not be obvious to the code official or to the owner, and, and it just gives the opportunity for everybody's perspectives to be understood. So, let me ask the question, if, how would you, how would we include the process to where there would be a public notice? Or how would that burden the system and still keep it at the code official level?
I'll answer the first part, or the second part first. It's, it's kind of a routine process to do the public notice, it does slow things down. I mean, you're talking at least three additional weeks, because you have a standard two-week public comment period, and then you have another week when that comment period closes, before you can really act on it, because of noticing requirements, it just ends up that way. So, you're talking a minimum of three weeks on that, that's how it would affect it. In order to make that change, that was the first question, if I heard you correctly, that, I would, I would ask the city attorney about this question, but in order to make that change in the code, I believe we would have to do another code text amendment, because this would be outside of the scope. That's in the, that's in the code right now, we didn't contemplate changing that part of the code, so I believe that would be another amendment process.
And how long does it normally take to go through the design process?
Through the Design Commission?
Right.
Typically, for, you know, an addition or a building, let's say a church, for example, I would, I would say if you've got good architects, you know, it really varies significantly, but if you've got good architects and someone who's on it, talking three months.
And if it's an administrative process?
Five weeks, if you've got a good architect and-
So, so this, this actions that before you will streamline the process for applicants. If we do a notification process, it adds some more time, and I guess I'd also point out, it would add a few hours of staff time to prepare the mailings and, and get a board put up. It's not huge, we do it, but it adds a little bit of cost to us.
Okay, other questions? Bruce? Okay, I guess we're ready for comments, we'll start with you, Jane.
Well, a couple of comments. One is, I'm basically in favor of whatever would make it less expensive and less time-consuming for downtown property owners to improve their buildings. But I'd also really like people to understand that the dollar amount is maybe less important than, than the kind of improvements that's done. I've brought this up before, in the past, the very most controversial things that have happened, projects that came forward that were hugely controversial in the community, didn't cost very much money. It was paint color on the Taco Bell, if you'll remember, and the paint color on the 31 Flavors downtown, and also when Hollywood Video put in neon, people went ballistic, and those were not expensive improvements. They would have been under the radar here entirely, but I think it really puts the onus on the code official to, you know, know the tenor of the community and be sensitive enough to know what should be bumped up to the Design Commission. So, I really think it's less important. I will go ahead and be in favor of the $200,000 ceiling, but I would really hope that the code official has a lot of latitude and knows that he doesn't have to give a rubber stamp on what might be a controversial improvement.
So, no controversial paint? Is that okay?
Purple, or, it was a very big deal, if you remember.
So, Councilwoman Brown, if I may, ask, what is your take on the public comment opportunity? So Councilmember Brown, if I may ask, what is your take on the public comment opportunity?
Well, I, I personally, I think.
After having just listened to what you just said?
Well, I personally think that adding another, what, five or six weeks onto the process is not a good idea. I don't like the idea of a shopkeeper having to wait three months to put up a little awning or something. I, I just think it's too much regulation. But again, it's up to the code official. I think paint color is really important, so.
Okay, Bruce?
Thanks, Al. One of the things I heard was that other cities capped this at $50,000, and so at $100,000, we'd actually be above a number of other cities. I'd also note that we've just relieved the design commission of a bunch of its work with the cell tower offload, and we'll be offloading them further here by even taking away at $100,000 the small projects that they, they have to deal with today, so I'm not so concerned about them.
You're concerned they might run out of work to do?
I think that would probably.
It might inadvertently put them out of business?
Just fine with them, but my, my point is that Mr. Malouf's comment that he thinks $200,000 rather than $100,000 would further relieve them, I, I take that with less fervor than he might have intended it, because it just doesn't seem to me that offloading them further is, is terribly significant. And I like the idea of notifying folks at the $100,000 mark, which I understand is what still happens when we stick to $100,000. And in addition, I, I like the.
No, it does not. Clarify for me. For minor modifications, currently, we do not have a notification process. For, in the existing code, we do not have a notification process that's required, either $100,000 or a million. It's minor modifications, major modifications, yes, but minor modifications, we do not do a notification process.
Correct.
All right, so strike that. So at any rate, at the end of the day, having watched the design commission work and having watched, put in a lot of useful feedback to business owners who were coming forth with good ideas and plans, I think that that process is a good process, and I'd, I'd like to not circumvent it too much. So I'd like to stick at the $100,000 mark.
Okay, do you have anything to add, Mr. Green?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to adopt ordinance number 11C-04, presented in Exhibit 1, Alternative A, thus amending Mercer Island City Code Sections 19.11.010C1, comma, 19.15.010E, comma, and 19.15.040E3, to change the decision authority for design review of minor exterior modifications of regulated improvements in the town-centered zone from the design commission to the code official.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and this is Alternative A, as defined in the agenda bill. This is the second reading, as we mentioned, and I don't hear any amendment to increase the $100,000 to $200,000. So, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes, again unanimously. So that brings us to other business. So for other business, council member absences.
Move to excuse Councilmember Grous from tonight's proceedings?
Second?
Move to excuse Mayor from tonight?
Let's take them one at a time. So all in favor of excusing Mr. Grous? Aye. Okay, Jane.
Move to excuse Mayor Jim Pierman from tonight's meeting?
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Planning schedule. Mr. City Manager, do you have any updates for us on the planning schedule or additions?
Don't really have any, any modifications from what you see here. We may end up having to add something on December 5th. The chief and I were talking today. Are we still thinking about doing that? It's a small item having to do with a contract with the King County Jail, and it's a pretty pro forma, and maybe we can even do it consent, but we'll add that. Other than that, that's it.
Mr. City Manager, I see where we took off the, weighing the costs of government against the benefits?
Yeah, it's, November 21st was just getting so full, and Chip and I talked and decided we're going to try and carve out a little bit of time at the January planning session to do it. We were going to do it last June at the mini-session, and now maybe it just makes more sense to wait till January.
Our, our HR review, which is in process, I think they're intending to be ready to present on November 21, and so I'm hoping that'll.
Yes, that's correct, that should.
So we don't have that on there?
Yes.
So they'll have a preliminary or final report then?
I believe they're looking for a final report at that time.
That's correct, and, yes, let's leave it at that. The BLS agenda item may not be a separate agenda bill, it may just get wrapped up into Chip's mid-biennial review.
Okay, anything else on the planning schedule?
Nope.
Okay, we've got a recommended appointment to the utility board, Mr. Kwong Wong, to position number two. This is, Mr. Wong has been recommended by the mayor and yours truly. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Kwong Wong?
Some rule, looks like a strong candidate.
There is, second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. So council member reports. Let me start with you, Mike?
No, sir, nothing to report.
Just two items, Mr. Mayor. One, we, with the YR group, have toured the Cedar and the local hatcheries, and I note that we've also done that with the school districts. So for those in attendance or watching, it's a perfect time to head up the Cedar, just go up SR 169, and there's a number of public spots there, particularly on the weekends, where there'll be volunteers out there showing people mainly Sakai and some Chinook, spawning inaction before your very eyes. And then the last thing is that we've got the Regional Electric Vehicle Workshop slated for the 25th up in Everett, and it's free registration and you get a free lunch.
Is the regional what then?
Regional electric. Regional electric vehicle.
Would that be something to plug in?
As a matter of fact, it's, it's called Get Plug-In Ready Now.
Get plugged?
And it's free. You did hear earlier the announcement that yesterday was National Plug-In Day, and they had events, bless you, around the country. And Mercer Island was fortunate to have, it cited at Luther Burbank for the, mainly Central Puget Sound area. We probably had, James was there and some other folks from Parks and Recreation, we probably had 50, close to 60 electric vehicles there, ranging from.
There was a count of 70, I think.
Yeah. It was a great turnout, a lot of folks there, a lot of, particularly in the industry, were in attendance. Puget Sound Energy was one of the co-sponsors, they always do a great job. But, you know, people are starting to get cars, and you've probably seen, I've seen at least four Nissan Leafs on Mercer Island, and I anticipate we'll see many more over the next couple of months. And I know in talking to James, our electric vehicle charging stations should be installed here shortly, so within a month or so, you'll start seeing charging stations not only in Mercer Island, but all across the region. So it's happening. Thank you. Bruce?
My only report would be, I attended part of the plug-in day as well, and it was great to see so many electric cars out there. As I said, there were about 70 that were counted by staff. You just had to watch out because they were moving around and not making a sound as they moved. It was great.
You mean, you, you can't, you can't hear them at that? Oh, God, that is scary.
My friend, let's see, Arts Council meeting last week, and the Arts Council is having its annual retreat this Sunday from 9:00 to 1:00. I'm going to miss it, I'm afraid. But I also went to the home of Mr. Dale Cox to see some of the spacecraft art pieces in his garden. Very interesting. And also this Saturday, if you don't already know, get your batteries and tires and your confidential documents to shred and all that, because it's the Fall Recycle Event. 9:00 to 3:00.
Thanks for the reminder on that.
Okay, I, I do have a report here. Because of the confusion and misinformation, misunderstanding, and outright incorrect statements that circulated around about our litigation with Ms. Lindell, our attorneys thought it best to set the record straight. The mayor and I have received the following letter from our attorneys addressed to Mayor James Pierman, Deputy Mayor L. Jenke, regarding Landy Lindell, V., City of Mercer Island. Dear Mr. Pierman and Mr. Jenke, here are the facts of the case, the main litigation facts. Ms. Lindell filed her lawsuit in December 2008. Ms. Lindell had never claimed that she was sexually harassed or discriminated against because of her gender while she was employed at the city. In fact, she was the second highest ranking employee at the city when her employment ended, and she was promoted to that position by the city manager. Although Ms. Lindell's lawsuit alleged that the director of HR had, quote, "flashed her genitalia at a retiring police detective," this statement provably false, is provably false, and the police detective has testified under oath that it did not happen. Multiple city employees and witnesses outside the city were prepared to testify that this allegation and many others made by Ms. Lindell are not, were not accurate or were simply not true. It has been incorrectly reported that sexual harassment, discrimination, and/or retaliation at the city occurred. There has been no finding of sexual harassment, discrimination, and/or retaliation. It has been incorrectly reported that an investigator hired by the former city attorney in the fall of 2007 found that discrimination and/or retaliation occurred. That is false. The investigator did not make such a finding. In fact, she made it clear in a two-page document that has been incorrectly referred to as a, quote, "report," that she was not finished with her investigation when she drafted that two-page document. She further testified under oath that she had not finished her investigation and that she could not make determinations without several additional interviews, including interviews of the city manager and the city's HR director. It has been incorrectly reported that this investigator recommended that the city manager be fired. She did not. Her testimony under oath does not support that statement. There's a video that was spliced together, which has made the rounds in the community. This video was created by Ms. Lindell and her attorneys using selective editing and misleading captions. This video attempts to make it look like certain things happened that did not actually happen. In fact, the video does not accurately reflect the facts. It has been incorrectly reported that the city allowed pornography to be reviewed, to be viewed by city employees. This statement als, is also false and not supported by any factual evidence. Instead, some employees in the maintenance department were viewing an internet video of two dogs copulating and were appropriately disciplined for that contact, conduct. There was no, quote, "pornography" at any time. There's never been and was no finding that a hostile work environment existed at the city at any time, including when Ms. Lindell was city attorney or deputy city manager. In fact, the only finding wrongdoing in this matter was that the city should not have withheld certain documents. I'll get to that later on in the letter. One thing that was established in the case was that Ms. Lindell destroyed documents that the city was entitled to receive. The city defended itself against Ms. Lindell's claims because it did not then and does not now believe that the claims brought against it or any of the individual defendants had merit. Washington City's Insurance Authority, WCIA, the insurance company for the city, decided to settle the lawsuit. It has the authority to make that decision. The city paid no money to settle Ms. Lindell's lawsuit. The court had limited the parties to five court days, which essentially only provided the city with two days to cross-examine the plaintiff, as well as put on the many witnesses who would have testified on behalf of the city. Given the complex nature of the case, the insurer decided that this restricted schedule posed an unacceptable risk that the city, that the facts would not all come out. This restriction benefited Ms. Lindell, not the city. Public Records Act facts. On May 5, 2008, Ms. Lindell filed with the city a claim for damages from asserting that the city had not complied with the Public Records Act and that she was intending to see, sue the city for not complying. Ms. Lindell had not even made a Public Records Act request when she threatened to sue the city under the Public Records Act. In her Public Records Act request, Ms. Lindell filed a broad request for information. The city provided her with approximately 40,000 pages of documents. Many of the documents that Ms. Lindell sought were attorney-client privileged or protected attorney work product. In fact, many of the documents that she requested were documents that had, she had withheld as attorney-client and/or work product protected documents when she herself was city attorney at Mercer Island, or documents that she herself designated as attorney-client privileged. This case was initially assigned to Judge Ricardo Martinez, Martinez, in the federal district court. The city sought clarification from Judge Martinez early in the, in the litigation about documents that it withheld based on attorney-client privilege and work product protection. No clarification or guidance was provided, and the case was eventually reassigned to Judge James Robard. The city's motion seeking clarification on the privilege and work product issue had not been decided before the transfer. Approximately nine months passed before the city received clarification. Many of the documents the city had withheld as privileged were ruled to be privileged. The court ultimately reversed a portion of its initial ruling and determined that some of those documents were not privileged. Penalties continued to accrue during the exceptionally long period that the plaintiff's Public Records Act claims were pending before the court. Ms. Lindell sought almost $1.5 million in damages for her public records request. She also sought another almost $200,000 for attorney's fees for that request. The court ultimately awarded her $90,560 for her requested records and $94,477 for her attorney's fees. The court did not agree that she should receive many of the records she sought. The city has never had a Public Records Act violation assessed against it before this matter. The issues involved in this situation were complicated and difficult. As set, set forth above, many of the documents that Ms. Lindell requested she had herself designated as privileged or had herself refused to produce in response to past Public Records Act requests by third parties while acting as city attorney. The city receives Public Records Act requests almost every day. With a lean staff, the city fulfills its obligations to respond appropriately to these requests. The city still believes that the vast majority of the documents that it withheld were properly withheld, and as set out above, the court initially agreed. Very truly yours, Michael Alexander, P-L-L-C. If anybody would like a copy of this letter, please see Ali. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.